All right, good evening. Thank you for being here tonight where we will now convene, reconvene our regularly scheduled school board meeting for the September 26, 2017, School Board of Trustees where we have just returned from executive session discussing student appeals, expulsions, student readmission requests, student admission requests into the Adult Ed program, personnel recommendations, releases, in district transfers, and pending litigation. And tonight, as you can clearly see, you see four board members up here. We have three who are out on travel. One, though, is joining us this evening via phone, Dr. Elkins Johnson. The other two, Dr. Caution Parker, our secretary, and Ms. Amelia Mackey are also on travel, but send their regrets. They, it's tough when you are so invested into the district, into the school system, and want to make a difference. To not be here is really challenging, but they had travel that put them in a position where they didn't have Wi-Fi or weren't able to call in. But we do have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and begin the meeting, and we'll move on to our first item on the agenda, which is the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance, Ms. Agostini.
Mr. Chair, we have a celebrity amongst us, Dr. Cheryl Guy, Westwood High School principal, and our inspirational speaker this evening is a Jeopardy champion. About a year ago, I met Dr. Guy for the first time, and she shared with me briefly her journey to the Jeopardy stage. My first impression was, what a story to share with your students. Goal-setting, patience, and perseverance. Tonight, she'll share her story with us. Thank you, Dr. Guy.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the school board, Dr. Davis, executive staff. Tonight, for your inspirational moment, the Honorable Ms. Agostini asked me to reprise my remarks from the Westwood High graduation ceremony, but this will be the three-minute version of that speech. Most of you are aware that this year I achieved a 30-year dream when I was invited to appear on the game show Jeopardy. The show began airing in 1984, and I thought I would be a good contestant. In 1986, I went to Atlanta where I took the Jeopardy test for the first time. It was 50 questions with eight seconds to answer each question. After the test papers were collected, they asked some people to stay for an audition and told everyone else they should tell people that they missed the cut by just one question. So, on my first Jeopardy test, I missed the cut by just one question. Years later, when they began to offer an online test, I took it every year. Several times, I was invited to audition and was even placed on the contestant list, but it wasn't until August of 2016 that I got the call to appear on the show. Now, looking back at the process, I realize there are several important life lessons in my Jeopardy experience, and I want to share just three of them with you. The first lesson is that you should be a lifelong learner. People ask me if the producers at Jeopardy gave us any idea of what topics to study, and the answer is no. The categories can come from any topic. For my show, I had questions on subjects as varied as books by Charles Dickens, human anatomy, religion, and exercise. Every day, make it a point to learn something new, to read, watch a video, talk to someone, or look at a map. You're never too old to learn something new. My second lesson is that you have to hit the buzzer if you want to score. On Jeopardy, the host Alex Trebek reads the clue, which is actually the answer to a question, and then contestants try to ring in first to provide the response in the form of a question. If you don't buzz in, you cannot score any points. In life, you must take some risks. You have to put yourself out there to accept opportunities and see what happens. As the old saying goes, nothing ventured, nothing gained. My final lesson is to never give up on your dream. I spent 30 years trying to get on the show. When I took the test back in 1986, I could have walked away and said, "I tried it once, but didn't make it." When I didn't get the call after each audition, I could have thought, "I'm just not good enough," but I didn't quit. I kept trying, kept persevering, and finally, that effort paid off. Everyone doesn't achieve all of their dreams, but the minute you quit, you guarantee that it won't happen. Have a dream, set a goal, and keep working toward it. My story had a happy ending. I not only appeared on Jeopardy in January of 2017, but I was a one-day champion. And so, in review, my Jeopardy advice to you is to be a lifelong learner, to buzz in when you have an opportunity, and to never give up on a dream. Thank you. Now, please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini, and thank you, Dr. Guy. Appreciate that. I always enjoy hearing from you on that experience, especially just never giving up. So, thanks so much. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of our current agenda. May I get a motion? Moved by Ms. Agostini.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Manning. If no discussion, we'll take it to a vote. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. And the next, we, on 5.1, we move into our student focus. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Plank. We'll have Ms. Nancy Gregory introduce our student focus principal and her school.
Good evening, Chairman Plank, school board members, Dr. Davis. Our student focus tonight is Keels Elementary School, and at this time, Ms. Alvera Butler, principal, will move to the podium and share the highlights from Keels Elementary.
Thank you to all our school board members, our superintendent, executive staff, and Richland community for having us share with you this evening. I'm the proud principal of Joseph Keels and would like to thank you all for the support you provide that allows us to fulfill our passion daily of educating and impacting the lives of our students. Please enjoy this video with a unique perspective on those 58 years of then and now, wonderfully crafted by our magnificent Keels Cub students with the help and support of great team, a great team of teachers. Joseph Keels, 58 years of excellence, period.
Welcome to Joseph Keels Elementary School. Welcome to Joseph Keels Elementary School, period.
Look how far we've come. We are forever grateful for Mr. Joseph Keels, who donated this piece of land. We're where our great school now stands. In honor of his generous donation, our school has, was named after him.
Almost six decades ago, we started off with just six classrooms, and now we have a whopping total of 44 classrooms. Wow, we have really grown. Because we are a school of entrepreneurial leadership, we thought we would share with you, from an entrepreneur point of view, what it was like 58 years ago and what it is like today at JKE.
1959, the cost of the bare essentials were little to nothing compared to what we pay for them now. Let's compare prices from 1959 to the, to prices in 2017.
Can you believe that a teacher's lunch in 1959 only cost $0.35? And now, a teacher's lunch costs $3.70?
The cost of milk in 1959 was $0.18 a gallon, and now it's $3.25 a gallon.
Speaking of milk, did you know we enjoy a healthy breakfast in our classrooms every morning, where we are served milk to drink?
In 1959, a loaf of bread was $14, and now it's $2.31 a loaf.
Gas was $0.18 per gallon, and now it's $2.33 per gallon now.
In 1959, a stamp would cost $0.4, and in 2017, stamps cost $0.49.
Luckily, in 2017, we have many options to communicate, including letters, emails, text messages, social media, phone calls, and more. At Joseph Keels, we practice communicating using a variety of methods.
In 1959, you could buy a candy bar for $0.5.
Boy, I would have had a whole lot of candy.
Now, in 2017, it costs $1.50.
Believe that in 1959, the average teacher salary was $4,749 a year? The average salary for a teacher now is $48,375 per year in South Carolina.
As you can see, there has been many changes since 1959. Regardless of those changes, one thing remains constant: We continue to strive for academic achievement and overall success as a school of excellence.
We are proud of our students and our accomplishments.
Joseph Keels is a Palmetto's finest school.
A National Junior Beta Club school of distinction.
An ASCD whole child award recipient.
A let's-move-out-to-school.
A member of JKE Strings Consortium.
A member of the First Lego League.
A recipient of the 21st Century Grant.
And a dynamic school of entrepreneurial leadership.
At Joseph Keels, we strive to be the premier school, period.
Thank you, Dr. Butler. Appreciate that. That was neat. And Mr. Shad and I looked at each other, and we both have struggled with that word, entrepreneurial. I get it. All right, next on our agenda is our special recognitions. What a great night for this recognition. Dr. Davis.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Plank. We'll have Ms. Libby Ruth, our chief of communications, come forward to lead us through our special recognitions for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Davis, and Chairman Plank, members of the board, staff, members of the community, parents, and students. Before we get into our annual recognition of our Teachers of the Year, we have two students who, I'm glad to say, are bright spots in, I think, our future politicians. So, while the political world might be a little bit of a turmoil right now, we've got some bright, bright stars coming forward, and we want, they were very successful this summer in Boys and Girls State, and even one went on to Boys Nation. So, we'll start with our student from Blythewood High School, and Mr. Shad is going to come forward to present certificates for our students. First, would Will Galloway from Blythewood High School and his principal, Dr. Brenda Hafner, please come forward? Will had quite a summer of leadership. He was one of two South Carolina students selected as a senator for the American Legion Boys Nation, which was held in Washington, DC in late July. Boys Nation participants learned how the US Senate and federal government function and attend programs on civic training, leadership development, and focus on Americanism. But that really was just part two. Hold on a second, Will. I know you're very eager to go on to the next thing, but first, let me tell them that you all are looking at the governor of Boys State from this summer. He was elected out of a thousand participants. He was first elected mayor of his city and to the senate, and we are extremely proud. He's no stranger to leadership, which you probably wouldn't be surprised. He served as junior class president, president of the National English Honor Society, as well as chairman of South Carolina Teenage Republicans. Congratulations, Will. We'll see you, I'm sure, in the future. Now, we ask Reagan Davis from Spring Valley High School and her principal, Mr. Jeff Timoney, to come forward. Reagan earned the position of clerk of the senate at the Palmetto Girls State, which was held in June. Palmetto Girls State is a one-week leadership and citizenship training program created to educate outstanding high school students about state and local government and citizenship. Girls attending Palmetto Girls State experience governmental procedures by simulating political campaigns, elections, and the political process. Of course, as you would expect, Reagan is also a very active high school senior. She's a member of the National Honor Society, National Science Honor Society, historian of the Student Council, and she's a longtime Girl Scout, working on her Gold Award, and she chairs the Miss Spring Valley Pageant. And when she's not doing all of that, she keeps our dedicated superintendent in line. Reagan, would you come back up?
Yeah.
Yep. With the board? Yep, we're going to take pictures. Dr. Davis? Can you come around here, please? Board members, y'all can stay up because you're going to do a lot of handshaking now. Rest of our Teachers of the Year to come on in. Tonight, we get the great honor of meeting our 2017, 2018 Teachers of the Year. These are always a very special group of teachers for me. I get to work with them throughout the year, and then I'll get to recognize them and honor them at a banquet at the end of the year. They become extremely involved in our school district. What a lot of people don't know is they're, of course, you know that they're recognized for being dedicated, amazing teachers. They do so much for their students, so much for their fellow teachers, so much for their school. But then, once they get this great title of Teacher of the Year, they get asked to do so much more! And they do it so willingly because they are leaders, and they have a servant heart, and they want to just do so much for their profession that they believe in and they give in their life to. So, we, we can't recognize them enough, we can't thank them enough. This is just such a simple gesture, but I think, and I hope, they know that it is from the heart. And while I'm standing here doing the talking, it is on behalf of these individuals, all of these individuals, everyone in this crowd. I thank the families who are here tonight, because I know you stand behind them, you take care of many things while they grade papers, they go to all the activities. You are their rock many times, so tonight, this is just one of the, hopefully, many times we get to say thank you. So, let's meet them. We're gonna, I know this is hard, but we're going to hold our applause until the very end. They're going to parade in front of us, and they're going to line up over here, and then we'll give them one big round of applause. And then, y'all will walk outside with us, and we will use the steps to take a great group photograph, okay? Let's first meet our district teacher of the year, Regina Dilly from Spring Valley High School. And with, come on up, just start the parade. We need music, I feel like. And along with her, we're meeting our four honor roll teachers. First, Raquel Jones could not be with us. She's not under the weather right now. She's from Bethel-Hambury. We have Sarah Hayes from Condor Elementary, Angela Robinson from North Springs Elementary, Erica Leach from EL Wright Middle. And I have to say real quick, telling them that they are honor roll teachers or the finalists for district teacher of the year, we always pull a surprise on them. They don't know that that's what they're finding out. We go into their classroom under another reason, and then they get surprised, and we capture video of it. That video's out there, you should watch it, it's great. And now, for our teachers of the year who are serving their schools so dedicatedly, Justin Simpson from Blythewood High School, Missy Disinger from Blythewood Middle, Brandon Shermer from Bookman Road Elementary, Maria Heron, Bridge Creek Elementary, Latonya Schuler from Catawba Trail Elementary, Shimon Claxton, Dent Middle, Melinda Daniels, Forest Lake Elementary, Jasmine Spain, Keels Elementary, Tamara Lewis Daniel, Kelly Mill Middle, Tawana Coleman, Killian Elementary, Becky Ann Struthers, Lake Carolina Lower, Pat Earl, Lake Carolina Upper, Shannon Woodard, Langford Elementary, Patricia McCormick, Longleaf Middle, Sampson Meyer, Muller Road Middle, Shelley Mann, Nelson Elementary, Whitney Chick, Polo Road Elementary, Becky Timmons, Pontiac Elementary, Takenya Atkins, Rice Creek Elementary, Davida Oliver, Richland Northeast High, Tina McCray, Ridgeview High. Tina, you're in purple, aren't you? Very good. Mary Kay Herrera, Round Top Elementary, Mary Rumsey, Sand Lapper Elementary, Pam Spies, Summit Parkway Middle, Jeff O'Shields, Westwood High, and Jason Ashley Windsor Elementary. Now, at a time when this profession, you hear a lot about, there are not a lot of people going into the teaching profession, and we are struggling to find teachers, these are the individuals that we look to, to say, "Come join us, be part of this great profession," and who will tell you this is the best profession in the world. So, thank you, thank you for staying with it, thank you for making a difference in the lives of our students, and for helping us be the premier district, period. All right, we're going to go outside to the steps. Family members, if y'all want to come with your cameras, you can get photographs as well.
Okay, next on our agenda is the consent agenda. May I get a motion?
Moved is, is recommended.
Pardon?
I recommend that we accept.
Okay, thank you. Moved by, motion made by Mr. Manning.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote.
Craig, I vote yes.
Thank you.
My computer is acting out.
Okay, thank you, we got that. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to 8.1, which will be our public, first public participation. We have no one signed up, however, if someone would like to come forward and address the board, they may do so now. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is 9.1. We'll move into our executive voting session items, and we'll move to student appeals. May I get a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini.
I would like to make the motion for student number one, that we deny the appeal. Student number two, deny the appeal. Student number three, deny the appeal.
Motion made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shad. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take it to a vote. Dr. Elkins Johnson, are you able to, do a computer?
Yes, I just voted.
Okay, great, thank you. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is our Old Business Action Requested Policy Revisions. Dr. Davis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We're going to have Dr. Marshall and Franklin come before us and share the following, the policies for approval for this, for this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I do have some answers to a few questions that were asked at the previous board meeting regarding a couple of the policies. Starting with policy BID. The first paragraph, there was a question about the type of meetings, and I did verify that it was for board meetings. I did strike through the words according to law. The law does not specify 30 board meetings. It just indicates that the, a board member may receive per diem and mileage for board meetings, and so I struck through the words according to law so that wouldn't be misleading. Someone reading that may think that the law states that they can't be reimbursed for more than 30 board meetings.
Okay, thank you.
And policy BJ. The board had some discussion about whether or not they wanted to remove the policy from the manual. From the School Boards Association perspective, there is no consequence for removing the policy. However, to apply for the School Boards Association Advocacy Award, the policy must be in place. Also noted, three of our neighboring school districts do have the policy in place, and two of the three districts in our state of our same size also have the policy in place. Are there any other questions about any of the policies that were proposed at the previous meeting?
Questions, comments?
Thank you for bringing that information back. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, that's okay. Thank you, Dr. Franklin. And so, we've heard the updates. May I get a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini.
I move that we approve all policies with the exception of policy BJE, where we will remove it from our policies and include it in our upcoming board handbook.
Motion made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Manning. Any discussion? If I may, I'll just add that this, the item removed was the advocacy calendar, BJ. Thank you. No other discussion, we'll take it to a vote. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Now, we'll move on to 11.1, which is going to be New Business Action Requested, the South Carolina School Boards Association Delegate Assembly. This is an assembly that will meet on December 2, 2017, as part of the South Carolina School Boards Association Legislative Advocacy Conference. We have done, in the past, our history has shown, two delegates being submitted with an alternate. There is no rule that says it has to be two. We just need to have at least an alternate who um, who is willing to go. So if you are planning to go to that conference in December and would like to be a delegate, if you could express your interest now.
Mr. Chair, I would like to recommend Lindsey Agostini to be a delegate if she's in agreement with that.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so Ms. Agostini is one. Uh, we'll vote on it, but that's one nominee. Mr. Shad? Okay, we have a phone-
Yes, sir. I'm looking for volunteers, really. I recommend Mr. Shad. So we have Mr. Shad, Ms. Agostini.
Okay, Mr. Manning as an alternate. Okay. Any other requests for that? I do know, uh, Ms. Mackey, I did check in with the two other board members who were not gonna be able to be present at all, so that they would have an option to at least express an interest. Unfortunately, did not hear back from Dr. Caution Parker. Um, I did hear back from Ms. Mackey and she had expressed an interest, if possible, she'd like to be a delegate as well. So, uh, at this point, we would have Ms. Mackey, Ms. Agostini, and Mr. Shad as delegates and Mr. Manning as an alternate. We have nine votes, we would have equal votes for each of those three delegates. So that is what is on the floor, may I get a motion?
Second.
Okay, approve, uh, motion to approve by Mr. Manning, seconded by Dr. Elkins Johnson. Any further discussion on this? All right, hearing none, we'll take it to a vote. Motion passes 5-0, thank you very much. Now move on to item number 12, new business, no action requested, uh, policy revisions, uh, 12.1, I should say, policy revisions, Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following policy revisions are being brought to you for consideration, uh, Policy EEA, student transportation, CA, administration goals and priority, priority objectives, CB, school superintendent, CBA qualifications of superintendent, CBC, superintendent duties and responsibilities, and Dr. Franklin will answer any questions regarding our policies.
Any questions, comments from the board?
I have one question.
Okay, Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Just wanted to ask a question about student transportation. I know we've had some concerns about that with the, um... Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, we've got you, go ahead.
I'm sorry, my phone's bad. We had some concerns and questions about the summit area with maybe putting a security guard and the distance that some of the community students had to walk. And I guess my question would be for transportation, is that the length of our transportation walking route, is that designated by the State Department or is that something that the school district and the school board have input on?
I'm gonna yield to Mr. Jack Carter to answer that question.
Dr. Elkins Johnson, can you, did you hear the response? Dr. Elkins Johnson, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay, did you hear the response to your question?
I did not.
Okay, um, so, Mr. Jack Carter's gonna respond.
Thank you.
The, the district sets the routes based on guidance from the state, i.e. inside a mile and a half, you don't provide transportation unless you consider it hazardous and if there are sidewalks, you don't consider it hazardous for the most part. Bus stops have to be a certain distance apart, uh, like, they have to be at least two tenths of a mile apart. Uh, kids, there are just a number of rules that we have to follow. We submit all of them to the state for approval and they review every route that we have and then they come back and approve them.
Okay, and my question would be, once they start working on Clinton Road, will we have the liberty to make changes because that would be very dangerous for, and safety issues concerning our students? So can we always modify that policy?
So, Dr. Elkins Johnson, the, the... Well, we had a little debate on whether or not it's in this policy or not, but it does appear that we're talking, or addressing the 1.5 mile, which I believe it is, it is, it's, um-
Yes.
Yeah, so it would be the, um, the first bullet under this policy, EEA is what Dr. Elkins Johnson's talking about. So your question was, if, was about when construction begins in the summit-
Right.
On, on that area, what, what would be taking place at that time?
Absolutely.
Okay. Uh, Jack?
We are already transporting elementary, uh, kids down to, uh, Rice Creek and we are transporting high school kids that are inside a mile and a half as a shuttle service and we will continue that through the construction.
Did you get that, Dr. Elkins Johnson?
My understanding, he said we're only transporting elementary and high school students?
Across, across Harsh Scrabble Road?
Yes.
Yeah, because the elementary, the middle school kids go the other direction. They go up-
Okay.
They go up to, uh, Summit Parkway.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Thank you very much, Dr. Franklin. And then we'll move into 12.2, which is our HR update, Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Chairman Blank. Uh, for our HR update, we have our Chief of Human Resources, Ms. Sean Williams, to provide us with that information. Ms. Williams?
Um, for Richland School District to employees, we have 2,327 certified staff, classified staff, we have 1,358, for a total of 3,685 full-time and part-time employees. The number of substitutes that we currently have is 561. New employees to the district, um, for this school year, for the 17, 18 school year, we welcome 99 classified staff, 264 certified staff, for a total of 363 staff members. Um, for our induction teachers, which are first-year teachers to the district and first-year, um, teachers, 106 induction teachers. Uh, we did have eight, um, international teachers who joined us this year from Ghana, Jamaica, and the Philippines. Um, our retention, if you notice, our retention is extremely high in comparisons to other districts. For the classified staff, we have 93% and on the certified level, we have 91%. Our overall retention for our district staff is 92%. Um, there's a breakdown as far as demographics of our, um, new staff as well. Current openings, um, for teaching vacancies, we currently have, um, four at the elementary level, two special ed and two regular ed positions. At the middle school, we have two ELLA, um, and science, social studies positions. Um, high school, we have two, uh, social studies positions. Um, so we do currently have some vacancies, so if, if someone is, um, looking for positions, we are currently filling positions. Um, at the elementary level, um, and this didn't get on the screen and I do have this here, uh, for elementary, we have 124, uh, positions that were open. We filled 120 at a 97% fill rate. For the middle school, we had 80 positions, um, 80 positions that we, uh, fill, 81%, 81 that was vacant, so 99% fill rate. At the high school, we fill 64 positions, um, we still have two remaining with the 97% fill rate. So we hired a total of 264 certified staff, of 271 vacancies with the 97% fill rate. Where did our new teachers come from? Um, if you look, we put the math up here and you can see that they came from all over. Uh, we have persons from Arkansas, Connecticut, Florida, Georgia, as far as Hawaii, Washington State, Virginia, Texas, uh, but we are fortunate to get most of our teachers from here in South Carolina. We know that Terry will be ending in 2018, June 30th of 2018. Um, this is something that I updated the board on a few months ago. Um, so we have 37 teachers who will be subject to the 10,000 earning limitations if we hire those of work and retire after Terry ends. Um, the earning limitation became effective for employees under the age of 62, who began Terry on or after January the 2nd, 2013. Uh, we'll need to review the list of current Terry participants to see if any of them are eligible for critical needs exemption. And when we talk about critical needs exemption, that's for the areas of science and math and middle school subjects. Um, so there is an exemption out there for those who are, um, in critical needs. Here's our succession recruitment plan, where are we gonna go? Uh, we have letters of interest to Terry participants that will be issued, um, this month. Uh, we have student teacher intern breakfast, which will be October the 11th. Letters of intent to teachers will be issued November the 15th. We have pop-up recruitment fair, uh, will be held on November the 28th. A holiday open house, December the 18th through the 19th. A teacher winner recruitment fair will be Saturday, January 27th. Uh, we are doing get on the bus tour and we actually have two confirmations as of today is Winthrop has confirmed, so has Francis Marion. Uh, we have South Carolina State and Claflin as pending response, along with Newberry College and Presbyterian College. All positions recruitment fair, we're gonna host that on March the 1st, along with our teacher spring recruitment fair, April the 17th. And we're gonna have two additional pop-up recruitment fairs, May 15th and June 19th. So our goal is to reach and give everybody an opportunity to come in and interview here in Richland too, should they be interested. Happenings in HR, we have substitute training that is twice a month. Uh, we have open enrollment currently right now, which is, um, held September the 25th through October the 31st. Um, and if you were not aware, we are, the state is implementing the new Rubric 4.0 evaluation system that our teachers will actually roll into in the 18, 19 school year. Um, so that is being implemented this school year to start, um, August of 2018. Is there any questions?
Any questions, comments from the board? Mr. Manning?
Uh, so I recently read something that, um, South Carolina ranked, I think, 49th in the country for teacher, like, satisfaction or happiness. We're obviously doing much better than that in Richland too, uh, because we have so few positions, but I thought it was interesting, one of the statements that, that was, uh, made to factor into that is that teachers feel safe in our schools and staff feel safe in our schools. Um, I know we occasionally do surveys on those types of things, are we doing pretty well in that area for our staff and teachers feeling safe in our schools?
Yes, sir. We do a survey each, each year, a survey is conducted.
Okay, yeah, thank you, great job, by the way. Um, that was a lot of hiring, so, a lot of interviewing, thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Shad?
Ms. Williams, thank you for this great report. I did have a couple of questions, uh, for one, with the, our induction teachers this year, um, are you all, or have you all paired them with a veteran teacher? Every last induction teacher is paired with a, either veteran teacher or someone in administration?
Yes, sir, and we have a great mentoring program where each of our induction teachers do have a mentor teacher who's a veteran teacher. Typically, it's a teacher who is National Board certified, um, so they have a partner teacher who they can go to. We also have excellent coaches that's at the district level that is hands-on. Um, and we offer induction, uh, workshops for them, um, so we're definitely hands-on with our, all our induction teachers.
And it's obvious that we, whether it's intentional or not, but we, the majority of our talent is coming from the state of South Carolina, which is great for our, our schools here.
Yes, sir.
But I am encouraged by the fact that we were able to pull some from 17 other states. With regard to our recruitment from out of South Carolina, what efforts have we made and are we planning on making? I didn't see it necessarily in the calendar of events that you, you have. It still looks like it's towards our local talent here in South Carolina.
Heavily, we're gonna focus on South Carolina. Uh, we do travel in the states of Ohio, Pennsylvania, Michigan, um, New York State. Um, so we are, um, increasing some of our efforts to recruit as well and, um, I, I think we're gonna go out to the state of Florida this year, so that's gonna be a, a new state that we, um, venture out to. Um, so those are states that we're, we're looking at.
Florida? Don't need a driver? Just wonder.
We, we will take an extra recruiter.
All right, thank you.
Bring your good shoes.
That's right, absolutely.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Ms. Williams, thank you so much for that report. Just wanted to know, do you know what percentage of our teachers that we work with Teach for America or any of those organizations?
We, we do not have a Teach for America contract. Um, only a few districts in the state have a Teach for America contract.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Ms. Williams, I want to congratulate you for, for your first entry into a new academic year, right? You came in January of, of this, this year and so you've done a great job, we appreciate your report. I do have a question about the, um, the critical needs, is what, is there a bar for what defines critical needs or is it just a vacancy?
No, sir. It actually is identified by the State Department. Um, it's identified on, um, South Carolina Student Loan website. Um, and each year, they actually identify critical need schools as well as critical need subjects. So it's driven down from the State Department-
I see.
And that's where we received that list from.
So if that list shows that, then we have vacancy in there, then, then we can then apply, those who apply have the opportunity at that point?
Yes, sir. We actually, we're, we're able to sign two waivers this school year, um, I did that about two weeks ago, for someone in chemistry, um, because chemistry is on one of those, um, critical need areas.
Okay.
Um, so we do have that, um, availability as well.
So that waives a $10,000 cap?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which will be, uh, agenda items for our next board meeting, October 10th, 2017, and Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, for the October 10th, 2017 future agenda items, we have, uh, posted, uh, student expulsions and appeals, faculty focus, uh, we have student re-admissions requests, our technology report, data overview. Um, I'm asking that we remove the, uh, data overview for the October the 10th board meeting since we have Ms. Jen Morris providing us with the data protocol, um, as well as, I believe we have in a future, um, board meeting after that, another data workshop, so we're, a data overview, so we wanna use that one, uh, to give you that information. By that time, we'll have all of our data should be out of embargo and we will have an opportunity to speak more, um, in depth about our, our, uh, achievement data. Um, we also will have our report from, uh, diversity and multicultural inclusion and the approval of the po, of policy revisions, EEA, um, student transportation, CA, administration goals and priority objectives, CB, uh, school superintendent, CBA qualifications of superintendent, and CBC superintendent duties and responsibilities, as well as additional, um, policy proposals for policies revisions, and an update, um, on Blythewood Academy.
Any other items for future agenda? And just to address, I know we had, um, Ms. Mackey had been asking for the Blythewood Academy and, uh, so that's something that we are able to see next time. And then I know, Ms. Agostini, you had mentioned, um, Read to Succeed, I know you've mentioned that a couple of times, that will come up in a future agenda item in the near future. At this point, with our Dr. Da, or Elkins Johnson, did you have any other items?
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now we'll move on to 14.1, which is our second public participation. No one has signed up, but if anyone would like to approach the board, this would be the time to do it. So seeing no one, we'll now move on to 15.1, board and superintendent comments. I'm gonna start on the phone, so if Dr. Elkins Johnson wants to drop off after being on for that long, she can, and then we'll, and we'll begin, uh, on my right after that. So, Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Yes, thank you. Want to say thank you to Joseph Kills. Sorry that I wasn't there to see the performance, but what I heard was excellent, so thank you. Also to Cheryl Guy, always love to hear a story about Jeopardy, of course, Never Given Up is my middle name, so I love to hear that story as well. And congratulations to the Teachers of the Year for their hard work and their dedication to what they do for students every day.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Agostini?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to congratulate, um, Reagan Davis and Will Galloway for representing us so nicely at Girls and Boys State. Um, thank you again- Thank you again, Dr. Guy, for sharing that story. We all love hearing it. Congratulations to all of our teachers who were recognized today, and especially to Ms. Dilly. She has touched my heart, has touched both of my girls, and she really is a spectacular teacher and so well-deserved. And a final note, when we were shaking hands, all these teachers, when we said congratulations, they were saying thank you to us, and really the thanks goes to them.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. Mr. Shad?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really don't have much more to add to what Ms. Agostini said. She must have cheated off my paper. But I, I just want to thank Dr. Guy. I cannot hear that story enough. And I do share those same qualities of being a lifelong learner and hitting the buzzer if you want to score. You can't even win the game unless you get in it, and absolutely never give up. Never give up on your dreams, your goals, and your desires. So I applaud you for that, and thank you so much for all that you do for our district.
Thank you, Ms. Shad. Mr. Manning?
Thank you. Also want to thank our teachers. I also want to thank, you know, all the, the support staff and the maintenance folks and the bus drivers and all the folks that underlie what our teachers do in our district every day, because it really takes us all to make that work. Lot of folks, and I appreciate what, what it takes to make our students successful. You know, also hear that one of the things that drives our teachers out is respect for the profession. And I think it's incumbent, I know everybody in this room, and probably everybody that will listen to this probably does that already, but I'm going to say it anyways. You know, we have to bring respect back to teachers in our classrooms and what they do, bottom line. And so I appreciate those efforts every day that are there for our students. I appreciate our board. I think we have a great board that also support our staff and, and all parts of the district. And it's a real pleasure to be part of a well-oiled machine so we can be the best district, period, right? Premier. I better do it right. Dr. Davis will come after me. Sean, and your staff, great report. Y'all did a lot of work to get that many folks in here and to see the very few positions we have open, knowing the challenge we have finding teachers is just an incredible job. So keep up that good work. Thank you for what y'all are doing. And I, I think that's pretty much it. So, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would also like to say thank you to Will and to Reagan for representing our district on the, on the state level. Our mission statement is to prepare global leaders, global citizens of tomorrow prepared, prepared to lead and excel in their chosen pathways. And I think they are just two examples of what we have to offer here in Richland School District Two. So congratulations to them. Also, I want to use this as a reminder to, to our parents that our makeup day is set for Mondays? I'm sorry. The makeup day is set for the school day missed on Monday, September 11th because of Hurricane Irma. Richland Two will make up the day on Thursday, October the 19th. So please check the website for more information on the, on the calendar regarding these changes. Early dismissal and student holidays in the district end service, all which are occurring between Wednesday, October the 18th and Friday, October the 20th. I'm excited to announce the first episode of Two Talks with Dr. Davis will air starting this week on R2TV and on our YouTube channel. If you've been, if you've seen the commercials promoting Two Talks, you know that the show features the fabulous Ms. Elizabeth Libby Ruth and I having conversations about topics that matter to the Richland Two families. Employees and parents and key partners will receive a direct link to the first episode in our e-newsletter coming out this week. So watch the show and let us know what you think. Just don't ask Libby about the house ban. She will still, she's still getting the facts out about that. Our parents and students hear us talk a lot about career and college readiness, which is a big part of the profile of a South Carolina graduate. In the coming weeks, several district-wide events will take place here at R2I2 to help fuel the flame for college and career readiness. And just really quickly, a couple of those events are, we have our PSAT Parent Information Night, which is October the 3rd from 6:30 to 7:30. Our Career and Technology Expo for fifth through eighth graders, students and their parents, which is October the 12th from 5:00 to 7:00, as well as the South Carolina College Fair, which is October the 30th from 4:30 to 7:00 p.m. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Well, it's been said. We love our teachers, love our educators, love our administration. I think it says a lot when we, as elected officials, we can have a barometer of what, what our constituency feels like if we're getting calls about issues. And I can speak for myself, and I believe for, for my fellow board members, that we're just not getting those type of calls that, that are, that are hitting us about concerns and complaints about things. We have some little things here and there, but as, as it relates to our instructional leaders, we're just not hearing that. And I think it says a lot when we look at Ms. Williams' report about vacancies filled, ninety-seven percent, ninety-nine percent, ninety-seven percent, at a time when recently it was talked about that we have a 4,000 teacher shortfall in, in our state. I think that speaks a lot about the culture and what we have here. And I'll finish and bookend this with, you know, our, our core four is a board, what we are values. And again, those are professionalism, success, integrity, and what we view most importantly as family. And I think that that says a lot, once again, to be able to fill and, and not share in the same shortages that others have. We still have our challenges, but I believe that Richland District Two can, will and remain to be a premier district, period, right? So thank you so much for all you do, and it was great to see the Teachers of the Year. With that, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Move by Mr. Shad, second. Second by Mr. Manning. All in favor? We can just do a hand vote here? All right. We're adjourned.